Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 16th Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedley.
Here.
Invitation, Mr. Colburn?
Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for our allegiance. We pray that you continue to give them wisdom and knowledge of this vision to lead Waukegan from bigger blessings. Pray these blessings in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Just one comment. I met with the Governor Friday, and the topic was the casino. He has not opposed the casino in Waukegan. I met with our casino partner this morning. He's not opposed to the casino in Waukegan. I suspect that if it doesn't come out of the house this spring, it'll come out in a veto session in November. I'm still adamant that Waukegan will get the casino, and I will continue to say that until which time I know it won't happen. But at this point, adventure, we're going to get that casino. Next, audience time. Jane Ferry.
Thank you for the time to speak. I'm Jane Ferry, 531 Lea Avenue, and Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street. The green cards that I'm passing out right now are the things to do in the Main Street District through October. The Waukegan Port District had invited us to be part of their Welcome Boaters Bag, which they present to all the slip renters. Many more events and activities will take place this summer and throughout the fall, but at least the people who are returning or are new to our marina are going to see that Waukegan has a lot to offer. And speaking of a lot to offer, big news at the Genesee Theater. Two sold-out shows in one week. I don't know if you had the opportunity to see Gabriel Iglesias on Sunday, but that was a packed house, and it sounded like everybody had a great time. And Foreigner is coming on Friday, and they are sold out as well. The Genesee staff has been working diligently to bring more acts and a wider variety of acts to the theater, and has some shows already scheduled all the way out until December. One of the shows is the Other Sheet that you have in your little handout, and that is the second world premiere of a mariachi opera presented by the Lyric Opera. It's El Posado Munka Se Termina, and it will be performed at 2:00 on Sunday. Tickets are pretty reasonable. They're $10 and $25, so please do check out the mariachi opera. And also look for listings of all the other things that the Genesee has to offer at their website, which is genesetheater.org. Three Brothers Theater is having a big sale on Saturday, the 21st, and they also have an Indiegogo campaign to purchase new lighting for their theater. Lots of treasures and trinkets are there to be had, and they are having a show as well, which is called Before I Do. It is being performed Fridays and Saturdays through March 28th. This Saturday is the fourth anniversary of Art Walk, or I should say Art Walk restarted. To celebrate this anniversary, Dandelion Gallery is hosting a juried show of about 28 artists. Art Walk runs from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. this Saturday and every third Saturday of the month. As always, if you have questions about things that are going on in downtown Waukegan or at the lakefront, please do visit us at waukeganmainstreet.org/events, or feel free to call me at the office, which is (623) 6650. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ferry. Chris Blanks.
Just here as a reminder of our fundraiser that is coming up at the Puerto Rican Society, which will be on April the 3rd, and that will be from 7:00 to 3:00. It is our comedic, soul, poetry, and fashion fundraiser. This is kicking off, some aware and some not, this is kicking off the first month, the National Month that recognizes poetry. So poetry is, April is National Poetry Month, and so that's how we'll be kicking it off with a fundraiser. And as I often said, we are not-for-profit 501(c)(3) organization that has been providing services, challenging issues of social justice, and peace initiative. I don't like to use violent. I think it's overkill on stopping the violence. If you want to change the circumstance, just change the language. So these are things that we've been challenging in the community for over 20 years, so we'll be celebrating 20 years as to where. As a 501(c)(3) organization, we have never, we've been doing this without any state, federal, or local governmental funding. So we're looking forward to giving the community another 20 years of service in doing so. Also, you had here at the City Council a forum on police and community awareness and what we can do to do things to better the community and the relationship between the officers. There was a couple of questions that was posed. I posed a couple of questions, and it was never answered, at least not by the city of Waukegan. Some of the other chiefs answered the question, and I'm really curious to know that in building a better relationship, I think it is good for both sides that Waukegan consider moving towards body cameras. Definitely don't see where it can really hurt anything, because if we're looking for transparency on both sides, as well as what the community may or may not be doing, as well as what police officers doing, I think body cameras is definitely something worth looking into. And also, you know, having a better relationship with the community also, too often there's too much focus that is put on the community when it comes to the no-snitch policy, where it is stated that, you know, that the community don't step up enough to bring these things to the forefront when violence is committed in the community. I think there's a will, as a balance to that, we should also look into the no-snitch policy within some of our police departments. And that means when fellow officers see excessive force or brutality being committed, I think they have just as much of an obligation to step up and expose that as the people on the street when they see crime, because that is a crime also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moiseo to approve the minutes of a regular meeting, minutes of March 2nd, 2015, and executive session of March 2nd, 2015. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is committee reports, motions, laborations, committee. That's me. We met at 5:00 today regarding the contract between the Sergeants Union Metropolitan Alliance of Police. The vote was unanimous to accept the contract as presented. I sent each one of you a copy of that contract. Are there any questions on what I sent to you to read? Okay. I think the contract in my statement to you is it was a fair and equitable contract. Provides for 2% pay raise across the board, and it goes till April 30th, 2016. Any questions, concerns, issues? If not, motion by Ald-
I have a concern.
Go ahead, Alderman Beedley.
Wage escalation. Private sector hasn't gotten raises in years, for the most part. I think we've got to start reflecting that in the city, because once we do the sergeants, lieutenants, the patrolmen, now the automatic 3% increase with the new salary ordinance, it never ends. Doesn't make city government look good. I would prefer, if we could freeze wages for a while, being that police and fire is 79% of our budget. If the economy goes down, which it's not very good as it is now, where do we lay off? I would think police and fire personnel, you know, rather than laying people off, they would hold the line on their contract demands or just roll their contracts over, might be able to work things out, but I don't know where the money comes from.
Alderman, we tried that, and the union voted to lay their men off, so it doesn't work.
That's brutal.
Yeah.
There's no brotherhood there, then.
Yeah. That's life. Okay. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
No.
Insurance Committee, Alderman Beedley.
Item A. Authorizing the proper city officials to settle public works employment practices liability claim. Number C-645-14-1007-01, for an amount not to exceed $44,000 in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Beedley, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
I just want to make a comment. I believe that the claim number was read incorrectly. Just want to make sure it's verified for the record, but I, vote aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Next, is that correct, Maria?
Yeah.
That's correct, okay. Next item is Finance Committee, Alderman Velco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I make the first motion under Item A, I want to explain that people that were here for the committee, general public does not know about this. For those of you that don't know, the city of Waukegan issues bonds to fund long-term obligations and capital projects. As a result, the city must adhere to Security and Exchange Commission and Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board rules and regulations established to protect investors in the city's debt services. The city is subject to anti-fraud rules similar to corporations, and therefore the city along with our financial advisor, bond counsel, and underwriter need to ensure all items of a material nature, whether they're positive or whether they're negative, are adequately disclosed in the initial offering amount. So the city must provide information useful to investors after the bonds are sold. This concept of providing regular financial information of a material nature is a bond holders is called continuing disclosure. That brings us to Item A. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council approves a resolution to formally adopt policy governing the continuing disclosure procedures related to city bonds. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Item B. The Finance Committee recommends that the City Council grant authorization to the city collector to enter into a three-year agreement with Lindbarger, Hogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP for collection agency services as presented. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Item C. The Finance Committee recommends that the City Council approve the 2015 budget and associated city of Waukegan's allocated costs of $94,709 relative to the Fountain Square Common Area. Budget code 100-806-824-438. And what this is, Your Honor, and members of the council, is it's like a business association, a BOA, Business Owners Association, similar to what an HOA is, and this is our share for the year, and ISO move. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom.
Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have one thing before we move into the next committee. There was a news release from the Government Finance Officers Association that we received. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the city of Waukegan by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. And this has been presented to our own Tina Smigalsky, Finance Director and CPA, and we have an award here for her. Can you have these come up, please? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee, Item A. Authorize the proper city officials to draft specification advertised for bids for custodial contract for City Hall, Police Department, and Public Works, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
That's just voice, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, voicemail. I'm sorry, roll call, voicemail. Voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item B. Authorize the proper city officials to waive the bid procedure and execute a contract with DGA and Esthetists for an amount not to exceed $65,000 for the legal and proper removal of oil, fuel, solids, and abandonment of the fuel tanks. Funds for this are available in line item 555-916-024438, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C. Authorize the proper city officials to award the 2015-16 annual materials to the vendors on the attached spreadsheet, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item D. Authorize the proper city officials to award a 2015 manhole and catch basin frames and grates to the low-qualified bidder, Neum Foundry of Neum, Wisconsin. Funds for these items are available in line item 555-913-025468 and/or 555-915525468. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Item E. Authorize the proper city officials to waive the procedure and award the automated meter reading contract to Professional Meter, Inc. of Morris, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $6.5 million over the fiscal years 2015-16 and 2016-17. Funds for this project are available in line item 555-916-027693, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
And that is it. Oh, no, sorry, one more. I'm sorry. Item F. Authorize the proper city officials to award the Waukegan River Represent Zone enhancements to the low-qualified bidder of Semper Fi Yards Services of Yorkville for an amount not to exceed $254,063.60. Funds for this project are available in line item 307-130724489, and Alderman Conkin makes that motion, as a former Marine. Semper Fi.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Could the committee chair explain what this covers?
Would you do that, Alderman Moiseo, please?
Tom would have to tell you. A little bit better, I think. The grants that were awarded last fall, there was one for the Waukegan River between Pershing Road and the railroad tracks, the old trestle.
Right, I saw him down there. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
That was on a grant. Alderman, that was on a grant as well.
Yeah, I saw him working down there. I talked to him. I appreciate it.
There is no old business.
We got to vote on that, Your Honor. We got to vote on that, Alderman.
Go ahead.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Conkin.
Semper Fi, aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
That is it, Your Honor.
Thank you. New business. Item A, approval of payroll dated March 6, 2015, the amount of $1,378,481.68. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated March 16, 2015, in the amount of $958,727.19. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Ordinances and resolutions. Item A, ordinance, amend section 21-121 entitled, "No Parking at Specific Times, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on school days on Buttreck Street East Side from the southeast corner of Clarkson Avenue South for a distance of 626 feet." Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Item B. Ordinance, amend section 21-129 entitled, "Parking Restricted After Snowfall by Deleting the Following Section." Baldwin Avenue from its intersection with Grand Avenue North to its intersection with Grand Grill Avenue. Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Aye.
Audience, I'm sorry, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
I'll be short. So I just want to congratulate Tina Smigalsky, our Finance Director, because she's awesome. She, we have a rainy day fund that's overfunded. We don't hear that often around here, and that's because of Tina, and I just know that she's a woman of integrity, and I'm very, very proud that she is at the helm for our finances here at the city. So congrats, Tina, well deserved. And so my other item was I was running around the ward today, and the snow has melted, and there's a lot of garbage in our city. And I just wish everyone, I charge every resident, every school, every church, every business, if you just walk outside and look at your little plot of land, whether you're a renter, an owner, someone who just is an employee, take five minutes and pick up the garbage that is there now that the snow has melted. We can make a huge difference in our city. I just wish, around the schools, what a great Earth Day project. Let's just get out there, everyone, and let's have some pride in our city, and let's pick up the garbage. Thank you, that's all.
Alderman Velco.
To dovetail on, to dovetail on Alderman May, and I don't want to prolong this at all, but Director Smigalsky, for the last two years when I've worked with you as chairman, it's been a real pleasure. I've learned a lot. You teach me a lot. It's been a real joy and a real pleasure, and I congratulate you on your award. And I know you don't like accolades all the time, but here in open forum, it's very good that people recognize what you do for the city. Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Rivera.
I'd like to echo both my Alderman here next to me, and congratulating Tina. I know the city is in great hands when it comes to our financial reporting. Her transparency is awesome, so I congratulate you as well. I also want to thank the community. The Lofort Lions Club had a successful steak-and-egg breakfast. Over at the Waukegan Yacht Club this past, yesterday, Sunday, so I appreciate, and the Lofort Lions Club thanked the community for coming out and participating in it. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Conkin.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Chief Farrell, but I got to put a little sting in this for the people that showed up Saturday. You saw the Police Department triumph over the Fire Department again. Congratulations to the Police Department, the basketball players, I hope.
Three feet.
Yeah, three feet. I hope everybody keeps this in mind, it's a great function, a good time was had by everyone there, and it'll be something that you can enjoy again next year, and let's see if the Fire Department can rally. The only other thing I've got is Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody, have a good, safe vacation tomorrow, let's not overdo it. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
A couple of things. We mentioned in committee, but we didn't mention it up here, we have bids for a collection agency, and right now, our collections, outstanding people that owe the city money, is in the single digits. The company that came, it's a law firm, they've come and pitched to us that they can maybe get us into the double digits. I want people to understand that that's revenue, that's a revenue stream. People, the public is always asking us, you know, find another revenue stream. That is a revenue stream. That's for people that don't pay the bills that are owed to the city, parking, water, et cetera, fines, fees. At least in my world, I have a lot of people that, you know, when it comes time, budget time, which is coming up, well, just fine everybody, just find people that don't whatever behave. Well, that's fine, but we can't find our way usually out of a million and a half dollar or two million dollar hole. But, we can make a dent in it if we get this new company that comes in, and they've, they do the City of Chicago, they do the County of Cook, they do the State of Illinois, they got 43 clients or something, I don't know what it was, more than that. But, I want people to understand, that's another revenue stream that we're looking at. The other one also, I can't say it enough, the water meters. By us going to the new water meter system, it's going to, it's going to save the city money, it'll save us as everybody together, now there'll be some individuals who water bills may go up, if you've got a water meter that's not been reading the water correctly, your water bill may go up at some point. But this is a savings. It goes to a monthly billing system, we went through all the advantages of it, but those are two examples of the city trying to be more fiscally responsible and trying to find another revenue stream to help us get our day-to-day operations, our investments, and everything going. I just want the public to understand that we do think of things like that up here, to try to find other revenue streams, other ways to cut the fat, other ways to become more efficient, to make things work better. Thank you.
Alderman Beedley.
I think by now, over the last four years, our Police Department knows what high regard I hold them, I have a deep respect for our police officers and our police brass. However, we have a problem in the state of Illinois that includes the state, all the state government pensions, the teachers, and police and fire, and that's called 3% compounding annual increases. That's not sustainable, it never was from the beginning. I don't begrudge anyone pay raises, however, the private sector hasn't received pay raises in many years, and I'll reiterate what, being a member of the carpenters' union, when I stopped working in January 2010, residential hourly rate was 37.75. Shortly thereafter, the, private sector pensions are governed under federal rules, and they're required to bring them up to full funding. We were slightly below 80% funding, so the carpenters' union had to come up with a plan to bring their pension fund up to full funding. The only solution to that problem is, since private sector doesn't have a line on the taxpayers' wallet, it had to come out of working carpenter's pocket. So, either in 2010 or 2011, the union began deducting $6.40 an hour from each working carpenter's paycheck. And that continued on. I still have a friend that's working, and I spoke to him last week, and I asked him what the hourly rate currently is on their paycheck. Well, they've regained some ground, but it's, I think, $34.40 an hour, so they haven't even regained what they were, what we were getting in January 2010, 37.75. Now, in my opinion, if police and fire can't hold the line on pay raises, roll their contracts over, I would like to see in the very least, any pay raises would go directly into their pension fund. 40% funding, I don't care what the state constitution says, it's not worth what the paper it's written on. These pensions will not be impaired or diminished in any way. What a mistake that was. Businesses are leaving the state, along with jobs and residences. We've lost two congressional seats in the state of Illinois because nearly a million people have moved out. They're going to Indiana, Wisconsin, Missouri, Ohio. If the state legislature doesn't act, you know, in my opinion, they need to stop passing new laws, we have plenty of laws, they need to fix what's broken. Get out of the state legislature, get out of your offices, go to some of these state agencies, find out what's wrong, and fix it. Fix workman's compensation. Last year, from February 2015, February 2014, the city paid out, along with our insurance policy premium, $3.1 million in workman's compensation. That's not sustainable. I asked our Finance Director if she could compile up to the last four years, and I don't know if that figure from last year is typical, could be high, it could be low. We don't have money to pave our streets. The state of Illinois, the closest state is Wisconsin, they pay about 2/3 of what Illinois does. Indiana's 1/3. Caterpillar, I believe, expanded their manufacturing last year, two years ago, they built in another state. This can't go on, we need to save ourselves here. I wish our state representative and state senator, all of them in this state, would get together and do the right thing. We're well beyond compromise anymore. We have to do the right thing, or we're not going to have any jobs left, therefore, we won't be able to make the payroll, wages and benefits. I pray for a better day. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.